Okay, good morning everyone and welcome to this case briefing on the Northumberland case, which is a recent CAAD appeal, which Daisy and I did in the tribunal recently. We've called it Lessons in Legal Alchemy because it's a really good example of how the compensation code transforms things which are real and exist in the real world into something else. And it's a really good reminder for everyone, whether you're an experienced practitioner or whether you're coming to this work anew, that we must always remind ourselves that when we do a compensation case, stuff that is real and we know exists and in our everyday lives, we will give a certain meaning to, may have a different meaning and a different significance, or potentially even no significance at all when we come to dealing with a compensation case. So that's really the kind of background theme to this, and it's one of the points that we want to bring out. Before I go on, there's another feature of this case, which is that it was a really hard fought case. And I think historically, there's been a tradition at the bar that barristers like to think that their defeats are down to other people and their successes are down to them. I don't think that was ever appropriate, but it's certainly not appropriate now. So I just want to mention other people who were involved in our team and acknowledge their work with gratitude really. So our solicitor was Joanne Blenkins-Sopper, Northumberland, and the client contact was Geoff Boersman. Our highway witness was Walter Aspinall of Capita. Our landscape witness, Mary Fisher of Stevenson Halliday. And we had a huge amount of support from the fantastic planning team at CBRE, led by Harry Bolton, and working with him were Hannah Cornthwaite and Chris Sinton. And I have to say, they really rolled their sleeves up and gave it 200%. And when you hear some of the things we say about the planning challenges we faced, you can get some understanding of the importance which their work formed in securing victory. So I'm going to do a slideshow now, I hope, and then keep talking. So just give me a second. There we go. So there's our title slide. This is the development which lay behind the case. It was granted by way of a DCO. It's the Morpeth Northern Bypass. Daisy's going to outline the facts in a minute. So what I'm going to do now is just let you know what the main points are we're going to cover. So there are four key points we want to talk about in this presentation. I'm going to deal with the first two, and Daisy's going to deal with three and four. So the first two are the overall approach to CAAD appeals. The second one, the relevance of consistency in decision making. We'll explain these when we come to them. The third one, the interpretation of green belt general extent policies. And the fourth one, the treatment of permission to appeal. Some of you who are regular attendees will know that we've mentioned this case before, and we did, we used it for a practical tips presentation a while back. And if you're interested in seeing that, that webinar was on the 28th of April 2020. And if you weren't there or you need the details, please contact Debra in Chambers and she can send those on to you. So without further ado, I'm going to ask Daisy just to outline some of the key facts. Thank you.
Thank you, James. So turning to the key fact of the case, the DCO that Jane just mentioned was made by the Secretary of State for the construction of the Morpeth Northern Bypass on that, the picture on that slide. The order included powers of compulsory purchase in respect of the land that was required for the bypass, which included within its scope, the appellant's land. So the appellant applied to the council as local planning authority for a CAD in respect of residential development of 135 houses. And the council refused that application. On appeal to the tribunal, it was agreed between the parties that the reference land fell within the general extent of the green belt under adopted development plan policy at the relevant valuation date. This was agreed by the appellant's planning expert witness in cross-examination. And that policy was contained in a regional spatial strategy, which provided for an extension to the green belt and included a key diagram that showed the reference land being within that extension. However, the policy left the detailed boundaries of the green belt to be drawn at the local plan level. But in this instance, as it was agreed between the parties, no detailed green belt boundaries had yet been adopted at the relevant valuation date. One of the things that makes this case interesting is that in the context of that DCO hearing, the council, which was both the acquiring authority for the purposes of the DCO and the local planning authority, had not treated the land as being green belt when promoting the DCO. And the examining inspector in that context had sought clarification, but without referring expressly to that regional policy of whether the bypass was on any green belt land. And the council confirmed that it wasn't. And the other interesting aspect is that there were a string of development control decisions taken by the council as local planning authority around the relevant valuation date in respect of land that was near to the reference land. And they had not been treated as green belt either. But at the CAD stage, the council did argue that the land was green belt if the regional policy was properly applied. So applying green belt policy, the council decided that the CAD should be refused, and that gave rise to the appeal to the tribunal. And in short, the tribunal agreed with the council and dismissed the appeal. So that should be the key facts in outline.
Thank you. So if you're following that, then you can see straight away, there's a real issue here because in the real world, planning authority, who are also the acquiring authority, have in a particular context of the DCO said, land's not in the green belt. In the CAAD context, they've said, land is in the green belt. So somehow or another, there's a transformation of one thing not being in the green belt to being in the green belt. And so this is one of the things that made it really, I have to say, a really exciting case for us, challenging case, but exciting case. And so this brings us then to our first kind of port of call on this idea of transformation, which is, well, what do you do with that? And what actually is the approach of the tribunal on a CAAD appeal? What shoes is it standing in? What perspective is it taking? And the conventional approach is that it's not the tribunal's function to look at what the actual planning authority did or would have done. The proper approach is to look at what a reasonable planning authority would do. And when I say would, I mean on the basis of the statutory assumptions, including the assumption that there is a planning application determined on the relevant valuation date for the proposed alternative, appropriate alternative development. Now, if you just step back from that, you can see that how the arguments go in different ways, because the claimant is saying, well, look, what I'm really interested in is land value and the actual value of this land that it would have had in the market at the relevant valuation date. And if the actual planning authority, who is the authority who would have made the actual planning decision on this actual piece of land, would actually have not treated it as green belt and therefore would have granted planning commission, that should be taken into account as my value or as part of my value. And you can see a certain draw towards that if you're for the claimant, at least in a case where the planning authority would have made a favorable decision. But flip it around, what if the planning authority would have made an unfavorable decision? And in our case, there were some of those, no doubt, particularly when you think of housing cases and five year supply. Often we have a situation where the planning committee, even sometimes against officer recommendation, will refuse planning permission because they don't want homes in green fields, and that has to go to appeal. Well, if you take the actual planning authority approach, you may end up with a decision that comes down against the claimant because the actual planning authority would have made an adverse planning decision, even though it might have been appealed. And the CAAD regime says nothing about planning appeals or Secretary of State decisions. The notional framework, the rubric for a decision is a planning application determined on the relevant valuation date. So you can see things pulling in different ways. And a bit like the Curzon case, which we've talked about in earlier presentations, it's a timely reminder actually, that if you start at the wrong place, you'll often generate the wrong answer. If you start, if you start with an idea of what you think the answer should be, in terms of should I or shouldn't I get planning commission, or is the land valuable or not valuable, and then construct backwards the route to reach the conclusion you would like for your client, you'll often come unstuck. So it's very important to start at the beginning of the process and work your way forward and see what answer is generated. So here, the tribunal agreed with us and agreed with the conventional approach, that it's the reasonable planning authority, not this particular planning authority. And so that principle enabled us to transform what looked like or could have been in a different context, a problematic piece of evidence that the planning authority said is not in the green belt, into something that was of less significance. Because what the tribunal said was, well, actually, what's important is that the decisions that have been made, if we're going to attach weight to them, have been made on a proper understanding of law and policy. And that's part of what you feed into what a reasonable planning authority would do. So I'm just going to read you a little extract. It's from paragraph 23 of the tribunal's decision when it was, when it was looking at this issue. It accepted that previous decisions of a planning authority will be relevant. But then it said this, "This does not mean that the authority's view must be treated as conclusive, and it does not relieve the tribunal of the duty of forming its own conclusions as to the correct understanding and meaning of policy, or of forming its own judgments on the application." That's paragraph 23. So it's worth just stepping back and thinking about the implications of that. As we put on bullet point three there, there's a related point on this, which is to do with consistency of decision making and the proper understanding of green belt policy. And we'll come on to that in a second. But just stepping back, it's a really timely reminder of this. When you come to do one of these cases and you look at the history of planning decisions, you can't take the planning decisions on face value. Because when it comes to the CAAD process, it really is a forensic process about assessing the weight that's to be given to those decisions. And in turn, that will depend upon the extent to which those decisions are founded on a proper understanding of law and policy, and indeed, the extent to which those decisions whose decision making process is consistent with the statutory framework. And that's an obvious point. But for example, in our case, or in another case, if there are decisions where permission's been granted, but it's been granted on the basis of the scheme, then one can understand when you go into the so-called no scheme world, those decisions would be of less weight. So it's a really timely reminder that what you see in reality and what you get when you're looking at the CAAD process in arguing a case, may be two quite different things. So that, if you like, is transformation one. And we're going to go on to the second key point, which was about consistency in decision making. So in planning, if you're doing a planning case, and indeed in public law generally, there is a principle of consistency in decision making. So in courts, we know that certain decisions are binding, you know, decisions of higher courts are binding on decisions of lower courts. In planning, there isn't a doctrine of binding precedent like there is in other areas. So one planning decision, an earlier planning decision, is not as a matter of law, binding on a later planning decision. What in summary, the law says is, is if you've got one decision that was taken earlier in time, and you've got a later decision, whose features are sufficiently close to the earlier decision, then you would expect the later decision maker to follow the earlier decision, to attach weight to it and follow it, because there's a principle of consistency in decision making. But if he or she decides not to follow it, they've got to give reasons. And those would have to be rational planning reasons for not following it. And those reasons might be a change in circumstances. They might be on a case that's solely to do with aesthetics, say, and I've had this in planning appeals before. The second decision maker might say, well, I appreciate the first decision maker thought that this building was an inappropriate design. I disagree. I mean, it might be something as simple as that. But there is an acknowledgement in the law that there's a public interest in like things being decided alike, and therefore, there's a principle of consistency in decision making. So transferring that back into our case, the claimant in our case, and in case we didn't make it clear, we were for the acquiring authority, but I think that's clear. The claimant in our case had a range of decisions which they felt were favorable or showed their site in a favorable context, and therefore were saying, well, look, because this is essentially a planning context, the principle of consistency of decision making applies, and you have to attach weight to those previous decisions. And you should assume that either the tribunal or perhaps the notional planning authority, the reason the planning authority would only depart from them if they had good reasons for doing so. And what the tribunal said was that actually, actually, the principle of consistency in decision making doesn't have a role to play in CAAD cases, because the CAAD process is a distinct process. And what really matters, and it's kind of related to the earlier point we've made, what really matters is whether decisions that have been made were made on a proper understanding of law and policy. And there's no reason for acting consistently with previous decisions if they weren't. And so the tribunal will really just focus on the substance of earlier decisions and really look at that as evidence of how decisions might be taken, rather than as kind of binding decisions or things that necessarily attach weight just because they happen to have been decisions taken in the past. So it's very much again, an example of this idea that the tribunal is standing like a court and looking at the evidence and assessing it forensically, rather than pretending, as it were, that it's this planning authority or that particular planning authority that has a kind of buy-in to its previous to its previous decisions. So this again, is another, is another example of how a principle that we're all familiar with in planning gets transformed into something different. Indeed, in the tribunal's view, has no application really, when we come to looking at planning in a compensation context. So those are the first two key points. And I'm now going to hand over to Daisy to continue the presentation. Thank you, Daisy.
Thanks, James. So that is a picture of the city of York, which you may be wondering why that's relevant to Northumberland. But that will become clear as I explain the next key point, which is the interpretation of green belt policies. So in light of the agreement between the parties, that the regional, the RSS policy that I outlined at the beginning, applied to the reference land, such that the reference land was in, was within the general extent of the green belt as set out by that policy. The question was for the tribunal, what was the correct interpretation of that policy? And it's not, it's relatively common for policies to be structured in this manner, so that there's a strategic level policy setting the general extent, and leaving the detailed boundaries to be drawn at a later stage by local plans. And the effect of this structure means that it's not unusual, that there is some delay between the adoption of that strategic level policy setting the general extent, and the local policy that draws the detailed boundaries. So the question that arises in those sort of instances, as it did in this present case, was what is the status of that land in the meantime? Because the strategic policy makes clear that it is within the general extent of the green belt, but there have been no detailed boundaries adopted. So, and at the time of this hearing, there was no sort of case law that was directly on this question. So what the tribunal did in this case was they adopted what they described as a precautionary approach, which in the tribunal's words, was the only safe assumption to make during the period of uncertainty between the policy setting the general extent and the local plan setting detailed boundaries. And in so finding, the tribunal explained that their view that was that once a site is included within the general description, within the description of the general extent of the green belt by the policy, the mere fact that precise boundaries of the extension had not been defined yet is not a reason for treating the land as if the green belt policies do not apply to it. And the tribunal acknowledged that there will be, and there was, aspects of judgment in determining whether, despite the general extent of the extension, there's a sufficient reason to conclude that this particular site is not green belt land. But in general, applying the, you know, the statutory starting point of the development plan, section 38.6 of the Planning and Compulsory Purchase Act 2004, required it to be assumed that the green belt policies did apply to the land being within the general extent, unless and until precise boundaries are defined through the local plan process, which if they take the site out of the green belt, then clearly the green belt policies would no longer apply. And what this means in summary is that in the absence of a good reason to the contrary, it should be assumed that green belt policies apply to land that is designated within the general extent, unless and until precise boundaries are defined through the local plan process that takes it out of the green belt. So although the tribunal, the tribunal didn't say that the site-specific circumstances played no role, but they did say that whether a site, a particular site served green belt purposes, was to play a subordinate role in instances where it could be said there was a good reason not to treat the land as green belt despite being within the general extent. But the tribunal was clear that the starting point, the precautionary approach required you to treat it as within the green belt, apply green belt policies unless and until those detailed boundaries had been drawn at the local plan level. However, you'll see on the slide there, what could be described as a slight fly in the ointment from, on our part, came between the draft judgment and the handing down of the final version of the decision. And that was a high court case decision of Mr. Justice Stuart Smith in Wedgwood and City of York Council. So having said that at the time of the hearing, there was no case law directly on the interpretation of these types of policy, there were two in one week. And the Wedgwood decision clearly had some relevance. And the parties agreed that it was therefore correct, that it was drawn to the tribunal's attention. And the reason for that was that the, the Wedgwood decision concerned the interpretation of another regional spatial strategy policy that addressed both the principle and the general extent of the York green belt, hence the picture of York on the previous slide. But the detailed boundaries had never been drawn, such that the same issue arose of what to do with this period of uncertainty, where you have the green belt principle and the general extent set, but you haven't yet got any detailed boundaries. And how do you treat the sites that are within the general extent? And Mr. Justice Stuart Smith described the issue of whether or not the site in that case should be treated as green belt, as a novel and difficult one. And the tribunal expressly agreed with that characterization in their judgment. Mr. Justice Stuart Smith considered that a nuanced approach was required, and treated the issue as one of involving a planning judgment within the exclusive province of the local planning authority. So the tribunal took the Wedgwood decision into account. They had already obviously issued their draft decision, but it was brought to their attention. They did consider it. And the tribunal did recognize that what they described as a different emphasis between the high court decision, which had the emphasis more on the planning judgment of whether a site should be treated as included within the green belt, and the tribunal's approach, which was the precautionary approach that I've outlined. However, the tribunal did consider that despite this difference in emphasis, it would be unlikely that a different outcome would have been reached if the Wedgwood approach had been followed. And whilst this wasn't explained in full detail by the tribunal, it's against the backdrop of the tribunal's finding that on the evidence, this particular reference land did clearly contribute to green belt purposes in any event. And that was agreed by the appellant's planning witness in cross-examination. So the tribunal applying green belt policy as interpreted in that way, found that there were no very special circumstances that would have been required to justify what would be inappropriate development in the green belt. And they dismissed the appeal. However, that's not the end of the story, as the tribunal has since granted permission to appeal to the Court of Appeal on the basis that it's not a straightforward question. So that brings me to the final key point that we're going to discuss this morning, which is that the decision has been, has been made by the tribunal to grant permission to the Court of Appeal. And the claimant sought permission to appeal, contesting both key point two, which James discussed, the relevance of the principle of consistency in decision making, and key point three that I've just discussed, which is the interpretation of green belt policy. And the tribunal granted permission to appeal against their decision within a matter of days of the claimant's application. And they, in doing so, cited the novelty and difficulty of the question of the interpretation of that green belt policy. And they acknowledged that the tribunal had reached its own conclusion before the Wedgwood decision. And we, having not made any representations on behalf of the council, we found it at least slightly unusual and somewhat surprising that the tribunal didn't wait for those submissions from the acquiring authority, but did just grant permission. And it was, at least at the time of writing these slides, slightly uncertain whether the tribunal were granting permission, both in relation to key point two, consistency of decision making, and key point three, the interpretation of green belt. It seems that, hot off the press, there has been confirmation that it's in relation to both of those points. And it does seem that sort of stepping back from it, the tribunal and also Mr. Justice Stuart Smith in Wedgwood acknowledged that the interpretation of the green belt policies was a novel and difficult issue. So it's perhaps not surprising that the tribunal did grant permission. And it may well have been that any representations that could have been made may not have had an impact on that. So overall, really, it's watch this space for the next chapter in terms of those two issues.
Yes. And just to add there, that we, we wrote to the tribunal just to, really partly to find out whether this was the usual practice actually, to grant, to determine permission without hearing from the other side. And they've since confirmed that actually, that is their normal practice to make a permission decision without hearing from the other side. And so it's something to be aware of. Certainly in my own experience, if you, if you look at the High Court and Court of Appeal and so on, invariably, there is a process in place where both sides get to make representations on permission to appeal. In the, in the tribunal, it's certainly been my practice that when someone's applied for permission to appeal, representations have been put in on the other side. That's, that's if it's been dealt with in writing. But the indications from the tribunal on this case are at least that actually, they don't necessarily wait or expect for representations the other way. And so that's just a kind of point of practice really, to be aware, if you're in a case and one side does apply for permission to appeal, if you side does apply for permission to appeal, if you want to make representations, make them quickly, because you can't expect the tribunal to wait for them. It will make its decision anyway. I don't think in this case, it makes much difference, because it's quite rare for a tribunal to grant permission against its own decision. And just stepping back, if it feels that way about its own decision, there's probably not much that representations were going to do. Right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, so we do have time for questions now, so I'm going to stop the screen share. And if anyone wants to ask a question, they can ask a question in the Q and A box. But if you don't want to ask a question, that's absolutely fine. You can email us separately outside of this presentation if something comes to you later. So I'm going to kind of count down silently from five. And if I don't hear anything from anyone, then we'll wrap up. Okay. Well, thank you very much all for attending. I hope you found it useful. As I say, if you do have any questions, then feel free to email us separately. Otherwise, hope you have a nice day and a nice week. And thank you, as always, Deirdre, for organizing the tech. Okay. Thank you very much. Bye bye.